Monthly meeting for September of 2023. Welcome everyone to here tonight. Appreciate you showing up and joining us at this time. I'll turn the meeting over to Commissioner Godwin.
Want to say good evening to everyone. On this great day that we call nine eleven, some twenty-two years ago, America came together to say, God bless America. It was like a unity of us coming on one accord. What I love about it, we had men that come from the NFL to join. Pat Tillman, I don't know if many of you might know not know him, but because he thought he wanted to be a serviceman and a service to his country, he joined the United States Army during nine eleven. And before we have our prayer, I'd like for us to bow our heads for a moment for those that lost their life, for those family members that are still grieving, for us who're still America and because of what America's soldiers have done. Stand up veterans. We still say we live in a safe and free land, and we thank God for that. But let's take a moment just for prayer for those families who lost loved ones in nine eleven. And Father God, we thank you for this blessed day you have given us here at this meeting. We call upon you now because you are God of wisdom, God of knowledge. So we ask, Lord, that you continue to grant us with what we need to do as men and women. And then, Father God, bless Sampson County. Bring us together that we stand on one accord. And Father God, all the decisions we make, give us a heart to know that we follow your will. And bless each one that's here, ones that are willing to be here but are unable. But you, Lord, we thank you that we can look high because you look low to take care of us, to guide us with the budget and all the things that we do. We ask that you bless our police officers, our nurses, our doctors, and our leaders of this great county, that everything we do, Lord, is to say thank you for being so good to us. Now, as we go into this meeting, we pray for each one that is speaking tonight, that they would do it clearly, but we will have an understanding when all this is done. And we do one thing, we give you glory, we give you honor for who you are and what you have done, in Jesus' name, amen.
Let us stand for the pledge, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, veterans. We certainly appreciate each and every one of you. At this time, we have two walk-ons to the agenda proclamation and then memorandum of understanding. Does anyone have an objection to adding that to the agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make such a motion that we read the agenda.
Okay. Just a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we have approval. Okay, at this time, Ms. Tillman, will have you give us an update, please, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You've asked for an update on our market study, and I would like to share with you that we are closer than we have been. This has been quite the adventure, and hopefully we're looking at, well, to give you a timeframe, right now I am going through the final data that they have submitted back to us to make sure that we've plugged everybody in where they should be and how they should be. And just to share with you what that challenge is like, I thought you might find this interesting as well, that while we're working on the market study, all our other work has to continue in HR. And from January through the end of August, we have had to deal with three hundred and eighty-eight new hires, people leaving or reclassifications or movement within, and all of that is time consuming. So we're not dragging our feet with the market study, but we're keeping the job going as well. I'm working on it now, should send it back out by the end of the week, hoping to do that tomorrow. I had a little computer glitch today, but hopefully that'll go out, and they're saying they should have something back for us within about two weeks, the proposals that we can then decide how to move forward and what we can afford to do. So that's when your work will begin. Had hoped to have something earlier, did not rush originally because we didn't know what the budget was going to look like, even though you all were committed to doing this. We kind of just, I didn't hurry up to do it. I was taking time with it, being very intentional. And then, once the budget was passed, and thank you for that and for putting the money there, kudos to you all. But once that happened and we got into working on it, then we were further delayed, took a lot of time and effort on the part of my staff to respond to the current lawsuit that's going on. That's not an excuse, it's just a fact. We had to pull records, make copies of records, and it was very time consuming for me and the other members of my staff. That further delayed us, the timing of it was very unfortunate. But we are getting there sooner than later. I'm optimistic to be able to bring you several plans to look at, to decide how you would like to move forward and what we can do with the money that you have set aside for this endeavor. So not what I wanted to tell you, but that's where we are.
Commissioner McLam, I think you had some questions you might.
I just, my only, my biggest thing was, was you say two weeks, and so you really feel comfortable with that, or?
Now, when I say two weeks, it's been a back and forth thing because I send data and then we move people and people change, so I'm having to track all that. But they, I talked with the company Baker Tilly on Friday with our representative, and once she sent me the latest, it's a list of all of our employees, where they are, how long they've been there, their current salaries, their hourly rate, their hours worked. It's a spreadsheet this long that we go through, we verify the data, that's what I'm doing now. Then we're also looking at their recommendations for movement and making sure we haven't lost someone. Some positions have been reclassified because of the job descriptions and the PAQs that were completed, making sure they've got those in order. When I send that back, she has told me that it would be, at the most, a two-week turnaround to get us a cost estimate back, and that is where we start looking at what we can afford to do and if we're in agreement with it. So not two weeks till we're ready to pull the trigger on something, but two weeks till we have the clean data that we can start having the conversations about where you want to go and what we can do.
Okay, I just, like I said, and I've expressed this to you several times, that we've had conversations, and I do appreciate those conversations. But I just get people who I meet and I know, and they're asking about the pay study, and it just seems like it's got drug out a little longer than what I anticipated, I guess, as far as looking after the folks in the county, because that's what we're here to do, and I know you are too. But I appreciate what you've done, but I'm ready to get it done. I'll be honest with you, I know you are, you're ready to put it behind you and get this thing off you, so.
Well, it's, it's more labor intensive than you would think, but when you're going back and forth and you're verifying and you're hitting moving targets, we've had a lot, like I just told you with that number, that's just kind of clarify how often, even when people aren't coming and going, how often we're moving them, or they're going from being a level one to a level two or getting reclassified, and then you've got to make sure you've cleaned your data up all the way through. But it has taken longer than I anticipated or than they anticipated. It's unfortunate. The best thing is I'm just hoping we get good results out of the finals so that everyone would be pleased.
That, that was my concern also, was that are we, are we staying up to date with what's going on with other counties with this timeframe that we've moved over to? You know, at one time we were dead on to money, I felt like going into the pay study, and now we're six months over, Allen's thinking, but we're, are we still, are we still current to what's going on? Are they going to give us current numbers of what we see?
Real-time data, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, that was my biggest question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Tillman, your workload, your normal workload does not include the, the data information that you're having to get on this pay study, and it also doesn't include the lawsuit, the data that you have to correlate for that. Can you give us some idea how much of your time goes to each one of these?
Within the last six, within the last six months, I dare say fifty percent of my time has been in response to the lawsuit, in pulling the data, verifying the data, responding to it, and then probably twenty-five percent on getting this done while I keep everything else running with my staff. You know, these are two big things that came out at us at the same time, on top of what we're regularly doing, while we're working on several other projects that were already underway, while we transitioned the new software. So those aren't excuses, it's just a different, different work environment right now.
Okay. You don't have any questions?
Yes, I will.
Commissioner Lee.
Ms. Tillman, I would just like to thank you for all the work, hard work that I know that has been put in to this work study. I've been through a couple of work studies myself by working with the county, and I know it's not an easy thing to do. It's tedious, and everybody's waiting for something. But Ms. Tillman will let you know that you're gonna get something, and it's gonna be worth the wait. So just hold your horses until it's time. Give her a chance to do what she's doing, and then we'll have questions about what we think is, is good and what we think is bad. So I just want to thank you for all the hard work. I know it's hard, and I thank you for it.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Well, three hundred and eighty-some hires, that's work itself.
No, not hires, hires and moving people and reclassifying people and changing them. You know, that's what we do every day, that's our normal workload, yes, sir. But I just wanted to put it in perspective for you that it's not just dealing with that, we're constantly moving people.
Right.
And that's moved our target on what we're working with.
Right. Well, keep up the good work.
I will tell you that out of those numbers, ten of them were rehires.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
That's good.
We're doing something good, maybe.
That's fine.
I just wanted to add my thanks for all your hard work. It's not easy to add all these responsibilities on top, on top of your data work, and I really applaud you and your staff for.
Thank you, ma'am.
Working really hard and getting it done for us.
It's, one thing I'd like to point out, it's not like we've been sitting still just waiting, because we made some moves that the local paper outlined over the weekend. We've, we've given raises over a period of the last eighteen months, twenty-four months, cost of living increases as well as other increases. And so we've tried to deal with that. We've also set aside three million dollars in this year's budget to implement what we come up with at this particular point. And have you been able, has everyone that you've gone to or that's been approached, other counties, have they been forthcoming to give us that information?
Well, we, with our salary study, we were, we had to select ten comparable communities, counties, and we did include a couple of municipalities at the request of a couple of our departments, and every, we got responses from everybody but the city of Mount Olive. So we've got comparison for nine counties, plus they're looking at the labor market, plus they look at the salary study from the school of government. So we have that data, even if it's not directly from the response. And this includes the, the salary data as well as the benefits. We're looking at the benefits at the same time so that we can see where we're comparable or if we have some areas that we need to address there. And then some of our pay practices as far as how we pay for extra services. So it's, it's comprehensive, it's not just hourly weight, rate or salaries. It's looking at how we compare with our surrounding counties, and that's the folks that we normally deal with. It's the, the Duplin and the Hornet and the Johnston and the Bladen and Cumberland. It's the people that we lose and we trade employees with are included in this study. So we have nine that have responded, which should give us good data.
Some of the other counties, of course, I've had some conversations with them, and with their last budget, they changed their numbers again, and it's forever changing, and I've got a feeling that's the way it's going to be for some time with this inflation that we're experiencing. It's, your property values have gone up, the social labor values, and of course, the other thing is trying to find people that will, are willing to work. So it's, it's a moving target, it appears to be.
Chair Kim that alluded to the fact that there was an article in the local paper, if anyone would like to go back, it was very forthright, and it stated some of the moves that we had made, and it would be interesting if the people that are concerned would look at it and see that we have made some progress, and especially on the hard-to-feel positions. Chair Kim, it says we have not been just sitting here.
No.
We're all competing for the same skill sets, and that's driving a lot of the shortage, that there are only so many people with certain credentials to go around, and I'm afraid it's going to be that way for the foreseeable future.
Bear in mind, too, that the money we've set aside came from our rainy day fund. It's not money we just had in a bank account that we were just squirreling away. So we've got to find that in the forthcoming budget, and that's going to be a major concern for all of us. So that's, that's inevitable, so.
Well, we've got, we've, we've got some department heads that are working hard to be creative in how they meet those needs. You know, I work with Ms. Fields every day practically on filling the needs at DSS and how we might incentivize or move or respond or reclassify, because, you know, there are eighteen vacancies there right now, just trying to get credentialed people in there to deal with the problems we're facing. So we're always trying to be creative in how we do that. And then when you talk with the health market and looking at our benefits package, that's not going to get cheaper anytime either. Benefits are going out the roof for everybody, and we're no exception, the cost of healthcare and the providers that are willing to take it.
One thing, too, that we have done, we've ordered a revaluation of all the personal property, and of course, that's where the majority of our taxes come from. Sampson County has been kind of the, in an anomaly in the fact that we had a neutral tax appraisal rate for fourteen years straight. And the, the advances that we've had in our budget that we've had money to work with has come from a lot of cuts over the years. And eventually, you've cut yourself to the bone, and you don't have any other cuts that you can make. So that's going to be a challenge for this board coming up in the, in the future budget to, to see how we're going to address the need for the increase in salaries that we're facing, let alone the inflation that's continuing to rise.
A special thanks to the department heads that worked so hard to make it all work, given the limited supply of employees and the huge issues that we face. It is really appreciated.
Thank you, they need to hear that, thank you.
All of you have done a great job, and we appreciate it. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, we'll go on to the action items. Mr. Causey.
Mr. Chairman, the attorney and I are going to tag team this item to, to, to make sure we cover the background. The, the subject is the reviewing of the options for the disposition of the real property, which covers the emergency, the old emergency service building, which includes the area where the veterans monument is. And you had given some direction back in December, and we thought it would be helpful with all of the discussions and the communications to come back and start from the get-go and revisit this discussion to, to see what the board might want to do. And quite, and in fact, we've even written in the abstract, this may be one that you wouldn't listen to the information and think about it and, and then vote on it for, for next month, okay? Relative to the emergency services building, first thing I would share with you is our nine-one-one center has now relocated, so we've got all of, our operations are in the new facility. However, some of the technology from some of the existing systems are still being used, and I'm not, Mr. McLam, a technological expert to explain how that works, but we've got some technology that is still existing in that building that will continue for some time. We've had a variety of issues that come up. We do not project that we will be able to release that building from these concerns or from this usage before February. And understand, I'm not guaranteeing it will occur in February, but not before. The other thing that comes in with, with the property is the fact we're still using that for some storage for emergency services and also for the sheriff's department. So we, the new storage building will be built, hopefully will be online in Thanksgiving or pretty quick thereafter, where we can clear all of that material. So we're talking about something that probably, as far as taking actions or moving forward with it, it will, will not be able to be consummated before sometime in the early spring. So, so we will work on that. One of the issues that has come up, and we have written a, a, a pretty detailed abstract, is the one question that comes up as far as the staff. Now, here again, we follow the direction of the board, so once the board makes a decision, we're going to do what the board says. But I think based on, on what we have gathered from, from the board, and we're operating on the premise that at the end of the day, the board has no interest in owning the existing building or maintaining it for anybody else that might be interested in, number one. And number two, I think we have all now agreed that the veterans' park will continue where it is, independent of how we dispose of the property will be how we set the parameters to maintain that property. So I think we can do that to everybody's satisfaction. Mr. Starling will be sharing with you, he has talked with the city from the standpoint of zoning and what we may have to do in, in case we have to divide the property, if the property's sold or if it's going to maintain in one tack with one entity. So, so that, that is where we're coming. There's been lots of questions. So from the, from staff standpoint, number one, we, our recommendation is ultimately is for the veterans' park to maintain where it is, either as a part of the total property, depending on how it's disposed of, or either separate it out if for some reason we're fortunate enough to dispose of the building in some other way, and then we can move forward as we want, okay? I'm going to let Mr. Starling talk about your opportunities for disposing of the property, and then you can have collective discussion and decide what you may or may not want to do.
So the board initially instructed staff, you have, relative to a sale of the property, you have three different options that you could pursue. You could pursue a negotiated offer, an upset bid process. That's a process where you receive an offer from a third party. The board then would indicate that it was willing to accept that offer, and that would start an upset bid process where other parties could submit bids over a certain threshold amount to increase that. You also have the option of doing a sealed bid process, similar to the way that you bid out contracts, like construction contracts. You would have a date and time that you would advertise that everyone would submit a sealed bid. You could then evaluate those. You would always have the option to reject all the bids if you didn't like the bids that you received. You could do an auction. That's a permissible form of disposal. You could do a public auction. You could convey the property to another unit of local government. You can convey the property to an eligible nonprofit. And when we say eligible nonprofit, it has to be an organization that is carrying out a public purpose that the county could spend its money to carry out itself. So it couldn't be any nonprofit but an eligible nonprofit, and there are certain procedural requirements that you would have to fulfill for all of those that are spelled out in more detail in the materials that you have. The, the second facet to this discussion, Mr. Causey's already touched on, is the issue of the veterans' memorial. We've had preliminary discussions with the city about what subdividing that property would look like. Again, I stress preliminary feedback that we've received, because we would have to give them an actual detailed survey plat, you know, to get a, a final approval, is that there should be enough acreage to do that. You could actually divide the property so that the, the tip of the property there where the memorial is would be its own standalone parcel that the county could retain ownership over, and then the other acreage would be, you know, a separate parcel. You could do it through an easement. I think if you're going to be selling the remaining acreage to a third party that's not a nonprofit or not another unit of government, that might, may or may not be workable. If you're going to do that, you may want to look at subdividing the property. But those are generally your options, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, one, one of the questions, Attorney Stalin, is this, if it's sold, we don't know what they might do. That's the one problem we come up with, that whoever buys it might want all of it, and then the veterans and the memorial are in jeopardy, just because we don't know, know the idea. If, if we don't subdivide it right, it could be in jeopardy of those things.
And what, I mean, what you would do, if, if that's what you decide you want to do, is you would go ahead and subdivide the property now, and then when you do your solicitation, you're only soliciting for the remaining acreage, the parcel that's broken out.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions?
I do.
Yes.
What would be our advantages of keeping it and the disadvantages of not keeping it? It's been in the county for, ever since I can remember, a little girl, and to me, we would have so much to lose to get rid of it. It would be too.
Well, if you're talking about, those aren't really legal issues, those are, those are policy issues that, you know, the board would have to, to resolve, I mean, or financial, fiscal issues that the board would have to resolve. So I wouldn't really want to, you know, offer a, a policy opinion about it, but those are, those are your options.
What's the requirement of the size? If something was to done, is there a requirement by the city for certain size?
Yes, sir, I think it's a roughly, a little, around point two-three acres would be for that, for the way it's zoned, would be the minimum size requirement that you'd have to meet.
Do you know how many total acres is on that property, counting, I'm counting the whole thing.
Yeah, it's four point, I think it's four point something, so I think that's right.
Good-sized lot, which I know, I know it has some, some problems at times.
It goes back, it goes back up under street, it kind of hooks around a little ways and has some frontage there.
Okay. My thing is, it was, the way it worked around, it would, there'd be a little bit of acreages there that would, I just was, wanted to know what the city requirements were as far as allotted.
For that, we, we had some initial discussions with them. For that zoning district, different zoning districts have different minimum lot size requirements, and this is under their ordinance, not ours, but for that district, it would be about point two-two, point two-three acres.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think that the main thing that the county is interested in is not retaining the property so that we have maintenance, constant maintenance on it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So with, with the conversation with the city, are they interested in?
We, we did ask the city if they would be interested in, in the building, and the, feedback that we got was, while they were very appreciative of us, thinking of them, that that would probably be a little bit more than they would be, be able to, to handle.
Okay. And then what, what concern of the veterans are, that that would be a memorial, not moved, not thinking about being moved, but with getting a clarity that that would stay right there. I think, I think that would satisfy their ears and their hearts and their minds, that we need to look at it. If, if each of us was a veteran, we would understand what it felt like to think about a grave site being moved. It would, it would almost be devastating for a child to come back ten years and says, wasn't this where my father, my sister, my brother, my uncle was? And I think that's devastating when we don't have a reality of that surety. I think that, that each of us need to think about that.
I appreciate those words, and I, that's exactly the way I feel, too. I appreciate those words, and that's exactly the way I feel, too. I think what we want to do is see that this stays within what it's designed for, the memorial, and keep that, whatever we got to do to keep that in place. I think we have some more research that we've got to do to figure out how we can achieve that, as far as I'm concerned. The main, number one thing is that we keep the memorial for the future, for it to be there forever, but also that we do not have to maintain the facility there. So we need to do some research and find out how we got that. I do know that we have some offers, and the Corps of Engineers has made an offer, I think, to remove the building. Now, I don't know that we've gotten that in writing, but that's something that we need to look at further and see what we can get in writing, so.
We also need to continuously plan to, that park could grow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
I hope it never does, let that be said, except for those who've already served. But with that said, you possibly could grow more bricks and it'd be a little bit larger, and I just think that we need to expect that as we move forward. When we go to divide it, we need to consider that.
And I want to clarify, I think I was getting parcels confused earlier, going from memory. It's actually, it would be enough to where if you broke off that tip, you would still have a little over two acres left. So I told you wrong earlier, I apologize for that.
You're fine.
I just want to reiterate, no one on this board has any intention of disrespecting our veterans. That is not going to happen, no intention whatsoever. We respect that memorial, that's important to us, very important.
I agree, that's the number one thing.
That, it's almost sacred that we appreciate the service, and there's nothing we could ever do to repay that, and we're certainly not going to disrespect any veteran or a memorial, not going to happen.
What do we need to do to look further into this?
I don't know that you have to do anything. I think we can, based on what I'm hearing, I think we can basically come back next month with a recommendation that you may want us to pursue going forward.
Okay. I think first and foremost, we need to understand, we do not want the memorial to be moved. It is to stay, and we've got to look at how we can achieve dividing the property. I'm more in favor of making the whole thing a park of some sort, that's been mentioned. But there again, the county doesn't have the money to do that. So if we can find a way, that can be done by a special interest group, that's fine, but as I mentioned earlier, the deficit budget that we got, we have no money to do anything like that. So let's look further into it.
Yes, sir.
Everyone agree with this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move now to another important issue. We're going to turn this over to Commissioner Lee.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to ask that the audience stand, if you can. If you can't, you may still be seated. I have a proclamation to read for someone in our county that will be turning 100 years old, and we're very proud of her, very proud of the accomplishments she's made to Sansom County, because she's been here 100 years. She had to do something right. The proclamation reads as follows. "Hores, Ms. Eunice Newkirk Devine was born on September 29, 1923, and has been a lifelong resident of Sansom County. Anne Hores, throughout her lifetime, she has seen many changes to our community and to our world. Anne Hores Eunice is a faithful member of Roseville Missionary Baptist Church and enjoys homemaking, cooking, gardening, and spending time with her friends and family. Hores Eunice created a happy home and a loving family, where she raised five children, 13 grandchildren, and many great-grandchildren. Hores, throughout the month of September, family, friends, and community members will celebrate this incredible milestone with Eunice. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Sansom County Board of Commissioners congratulates Eunice Newkirk Devine on her 100th birthday and extends its best wishes for many more years of health and happiness, adopted this 11th day of September 2023." Now, she has, any family members, would they come and get the proclamation to take to the family? If not, it will be mailed to them. We thank you all. I need to make a motion for us to adopt this proclamation.
I make such a motion that we adopt this proclamation of Ms. Eunice Newkirk Devine.
Okay. All in favor?
Right hand.
It's passed unanimously.
I think we didn't get a second on that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We did.
I made a motion.
I thought she did.
No, she didn't.
I'll second it.
All right. Now we'll vote on it. All in favor, raise your hand. I need hearing aids, I guess. All right. It's time to turn it over to Vice Chair Lee.
Again, we have three appointments to be made for boards, and one of those is to serve as chair. I move that we appoint Joel Rose to serve as chair for the CVB Board of Directors for this year. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. I move that we appoint Mayor Alice Butler of Roseboro to serve on Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council.
Second.
All in favor. And I move, lastly, that we appoint Wendy Durham to represent District 5 on the Volunteer Ag District Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, and thank you so much, these were serving.
Thank you very much. Let bring us to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Assume it's unanimous. Okay. All right. That brings us to the county manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have but one thing. Just remind the board that Thursday is the last day of our current economic developer, Stephen Barrenson's work with the county. We very much appreciate what he has done. Our new interim director, Mr. Ray Jordan, standing at, sitting at the back, is going to be the interim director for a while, so I don't think he was satisfied just running two departments, one department, so we're going to give him a shot, a run in two for a while and see how he holds up. But he's also had some health issues, and he's done, doing a real good job of trying to recover and get back in the saddle, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I'm sure Mr. Jordan will do a great job.
Yes.
So that brings us now to the public comment section. Would you read our statement?
In accordance with the North Carolina general statutes, a period of time is reserved for comments from the public on topics not included in this agenda. Speakers will be called forward in the order that they registered and should begin by stating their name and address. Each speaker is allotted three minutes for comments. The light on the lectern will turn yellow with one minute remaining, and will turn red and chime when the time is up. If the allotted time is not used, remaining time cannot be yielded to another speaker. We ask that when your time is up, you promptly conclude your comments and return to your seat. The public comment section is intended to provide a forum for the board to listen to its citizens, and there should be no expectation that the board will answer any questions raised during this time. As always, a full copy of these policies and procedures is available at the registration table and on our website.
Thank you very much. The duly adopted rules of the procedure and the conduct of the meeting of Sampson County Board of Commissioners sets the standards of decorum for its members, our staff, and those in attendance. In these rules, we pledge to the citizens of Sampson County our respect, and we ask our citizens to likewise conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with board members and fellow citizens. Receiving input from our citizens is an integral part of our meeting and critical for the board's ability to make sound, prudent decisions that are responsive to the needs of the community. Offered with civility, such input is very much appreciated by this board. However, per adopted policy, commenters shall not use profanity, shall not engage in slander or impertinent or personal attacks as they offer public comments. Any input which is offered in the form of the rude personal criticism, any individual is not unwarranted and unnecessary, it is simply not helpful in our deliberation. We appreciate your compliance with these standards of decorum. This time, Mr. Grasik, you're up.
My name is Robert Grasik. I live on Greensbridge Road in Parkersburg, North Carolina, and peace be with you on 22 years ago, I led a team of customs inspectors at this time looking for those terrorists that drew blood of Americans on our soil. We looked and we sought these individuals out. Several months later, I was assigned to go overseas to go and inspect cargo coming to the United States so it wouldn't explode on American soil. I was assigned to, I was asked to go to France, and I said, send me. I was assigned to the port of La Havre, France, in Normandy. On D-Day, plus 59 years, at 4:00 a.m. in the morning, I saw the sunrise at the First Division Memorial in the American Cemetery. It seemed the blood had risen from the beaches to the sky for all the soldiers that we lost. And at that American Cemetery, you can see monuments of all our soldiers that we lost as far as you can see, white granite monuments. Everywhere you went in France, there would be a little city, and in that city would be a monument to those Americans, those British, and those Canadian soldiers that lost their lives in that city. Even though they're not buried there, it's a monument to them. Now, here we are in Clinton, North Carolina, and we have an armory that is no longer viable as a building that floods, and we have a small little portion that is a memorial, a veterans' park, a county park. Well, let's get that building torn down and put the entire place to our veterans. Make it a county park, a memorial, a county memorial park. In a few years, our kids won't know what a helicopter from Vietnam looks like, or an armored personnel carrier, or a tank. They'll be thinking that all it is is a little drone that takes explosives and blows up our enemy. Let's give something to our veterans. Give a place for them to go to and mourn and celebrate Veterans Day, and keep that shelter there for them that's behind from the EMS building so that they can have a place to celebrate and to get together, as a brotherhood should. They're brothers, and in war, they're brothers. They left Clinton, North Carolina, to go to war and defend us, and freedom is not free. Freedom costs blood, tears, and sweat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grasik. Ms. Hunt, Elaine Hunt.
Honorable board, I would like those who have come with me this evening to please stand in support of what I'm about to say. My name is Elaine F. Hunt. My address is 7171 Old Warsaw Road, Turkey. I have been coming before you since May 2022. My request remains the same. The song is still the same. We residents further down from the Timelake subdivision but located on the same road, Old Warsaw Road, we're requesting county water. Our water is not getting better, and this brown rusty water is detrimental to our physical health. I know what you said about the number of people who would be required on the petition. I know what you said about the cost, but please hear what I am saying. We too deserve to have good, clean water. It's the right thing to do. It was stated that this section, this section of Old Warsaw Road was, would not qualify for a water extension using your current scoring system. My response to that is change and amend your scoring system. Your system, in my mind, is not feasible for all the areas in Sampson County. And I see the county, you all are doing a marvelous job at what you do, and I do believe you can do anything you set your mind to do. I have been told that there are grants available by reliable sources. I am told that you all are more accessible to these grants and the grant information than I. I know that no county takes revenues is used to expand the water supply, but please take time to research these grants. Please take time to help us down Old Warsaw Road. Please consider and do something about this concern. I read a person can survive a month without food, but a person will not survive three days without water. Water is essential to life, and once again, I say to you, we are not looking to hand out, but we are looking a helping hand. And in conclusion, I have brought carpets for you all to see the rusty water in my washer because I can't wash white clothes, but I got here too late to pass it out. And also, you can see this bottle. The water that was in here came from my faucet. You see the rust, brown water. Please help the people down on Old Warsaw Road, and I thank you for your time, your consideration, and your approval of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. David Brown.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So my name is David Brown. I live at 3030 Fleet Cooper Road in Roseboro. I'm here tonight to talk to you about what I believe is a problem with the construction debris contract compactor up the Snow Hill Convenience Site. This compactor has been broken for at least three months, I'm 100% sure of that, but I believe it's more like a five or six-month period that it's been broken. I've asked repeatedly of the site employees over this time span what is wrong, and they don't know what's wrong with it or when it's going to be fixed. The last time I was on the site was 5 September 2023, and the employee there working told me to ask the site manager that he should know. Called the site manager on Wednesday, 6 September 2023, at 10:21 and got no answer. There's no voicemail on the number that I called, so I couldn't leave a message to be able to call back. Called again on Friday, 8 September 2023, at 14:46, and a woman, who I'm assuming was the office manager or the secretary, answered and said I would have to contact the GFL and Hope Mills as they have control over the Snow Hill Convenience Site. So I called that office on Friday, 8 September 2023, at 15:05 and spoke to a woman named Donna. After explaining why I was calling, she said I would have to speak to Samantha as she was the supervisor for that site. I left a message at 15:10, and she did return my phone call at 15:18. She said they had another six to eight weeks to wait on parts before the compactor could be repaired. We discussed why it would take so long to get parts, and she said it was due in part to the age of the compactor, and because of that age, it made it hard to get parts. But it would be fixed as soon as they came in because they wanted the compactor repaired, too. I said that they should tell the employees working on that site so that they could tell us, as Sampson County residents and consumers of that spot, so that we wouldn't be so upset. You load a truck up full of debris to take up there, and then you can't get it out, and then you do that three or four times, you have a tendency to be a bit upset. Most people are relatively calm, but we do have people that I feel might jeopardize an employee's safety. Eight weeks would make a delivery date of 3 November 23 for the parts. I would assume that because of the length of this timeframe, that that compactor would be repaired during the week of 6 through 10 November, and my goal right now is on 13 November to call them to find out if it has been fixed. Problems here is, we should be able to tell employees or the customers what the problem is and what's going on so that we understand your concern about our complaint, and also because, it's my understanding, Sampson County pays for the tipping fee on that dumpster that our tax dollars are being well spent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. William Dever.
Good afternoon. I'm William Dever at 4868 Bonnet Field Row, Clinton, 28328. I am currently the president of the Sampson County Veterans Council, elected president for this year. And I just want to change this thing up a little bit. We've been talking about Veterans Park, and I'm going to start off by saying, the veterans of Sampson County, thank you guys for your consideration of what you're planning to do for the veterans of Veterans Park. You know, we know as veterans that you all are, are going to do your very best for the veterans of the county. And I just wanted to reiterate that and, and tell you that, hey, we thank you so much for what you guys are doing. Another thing is that, that park also, and I don't think anyone has stated since we've been here, we have a Medal of Honor recipient in Sampson County, one. And that Veterans Park has that Medal of Honor recipient sitting there with those big blue stars and things of that nature. The Medal of Honor is the highest honor. It is the highest ultimate sacrifice that you can give in a time of war. So thank you guys so much. And to end up here, you are all cordially invited to our Veterans Day program on November 11. We would love to see you all there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dever. Frederick Hayes.
First, I want to thank the board for giving me this opportunity. I want to thank my fellow veterans for their service. As some of you know, my name is Frederick Hayes. I'm the jail administrator for Sampson County, address is 166 New Pine Lane. And I feel like wearing cold red when it comes to detention staffing. You know, one of some of the things I wanted to point out is, within these next four weeks, I heard Ms. Dillon talk about staff coming and staff going. I wanted to address that. I've got four employees that I'm losing. In fact, I've already lost one in Johnston County. I'm losing one in Duplin County, already got the resignation letter. Losing one to Red Spring Police Department. Losing one to the North Carolina Department of Correction. That's putting me at 16 vacancies. Not only is it putting me at 16 vacancies, I have one out on maternity leave, I have one out on family medical leave, the doctor took one out on Friday, and then I have another that had to go to the ER today because of high blood pressure. So I'm having to juggle 46 staff members, and I'm having to juggle with 23 being out. That's 50% of my staff. And then when I ask some of my staff why they're leaving, it is got to do with salary. It doesn't have to do with poor management or jail management. The reason I say that, because I am your reigning North Carolina Detention Jail Administrator of the Year. If I was that bad of an administrator, I wouldn't have been the vote appointed that. So I can't say that it's my management. So I'm coming to you as the Board of Commissioners, I understand that we're waiting on this pay study. The sheriff did not ask me to do this. I do this because it's my heart. My heart is for the people of Sampson County, my heart is for my employees. I had three staff members that got assaulted today. Now, had them three staff members had to go out, that would have put me at six, 26 staff members. So I'm just saying, I come to the board to plead, yeah, we got this pay study in progress, but something needs to be done. We're in cold red, it's urgent. I'm looking at, you know, I just had my semi-inspection back in July 19th, July 19th of this year. That's my semi-inspection, I do two inspections a year. The only thing I got gigged on was being overstaffed with females. Last jail inspection, I didn't gig, get gigged on anything. So that's why I say, if I was such a bad jail administrator, we wouldn't have such a good jail inspection. I can't help when we're overcrowded. So I'm pleading to the board once again, please do something as it comes to employee salaries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on the public comment section? Seeing none, I'll make the motion to recess to reconvene. What's the date?
Monday, the 25th.
Monday, the 25th. I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. We are recessed to reconvene.
Monday, the 25th. For what time?
6 o'clock.
Six.
At the hospital for the board meeting. For the annual board meeting.
That's it, folks.